Good morning, please come to order. Please turn your cellphone off or on vibrate. And welcome to the joint meeting of the Commissioners of St. Mary's County and the St. Mary's County Board of Education, this date Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. I'm John O'Connor, Vice President of the Commissioners of St. Mary's County. I represent the 3rd Commissioner District, which includes Charlotte Hall, 7th District, Golden Beach, and Mechanicsville. Commissioner President Guy will be joining us via teleconference. I'd like to introduce the other Commissioners and our county administrator. Sitting to my right, representing the 1st Commissioner District, which includes Ridge, Piney Point, and St. George's Island, Commissioner Eric Colvin.
Good morning.
Representing the 2nd Commissioner District, which includes Lenartown and Hollywood, Commissioner Mike Hewitt.
Good morning.
Sitting to my left, representing the 4th Commissioner District, which includes Lexington Park, some of California, Great Mills, and some of Hollywood, Commissioner Todd Morgan. Dr. Bridget, our county administrator, is sitting at the end of the dais. Alyssa Cassis, our communication director, is sitting at the table to our right.
Morning.
Ms. Amy Carter, our video media producer, is behind the glass. Sitting at the table in front of me is Ms. Karen Bailey, Chairman, Board of Education. Ms. Bailey, would you like to introduce members of the board and make a few remarks?
Yes, thank you. So, we have Vice Chair Kathy Allen.
Good morning.
We have Board Member Mary Washington.
Good morning.
We have Board Member Jim Davis.
Good morning.
We have Board Member Rita Weaver.
Good morning.
And we are also joined by our Superintendent, Dr. Scott Smith.
Good morning.
So, thank you for this opportunity to meet. I know we get together twice a year. It was a little bit, I guess, delayed due to COVID and all of the challenges that both the county and the school system operated under last year. So, Randy Guy, Commissioner President, and myself, and Dr. Smith, and Dr. Bridget, we've developed this agenda with, you know, appropriate topics that are either, you know, have happened over the past year, or might be upcoming and still going on. So, we welcome open discussion, and let's see how we do.
All right. And before we move on to the agenda, would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge?
[inaudible] And to the Republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First on the agenda, we have Dr. James Scott Smith, Superintendent, for his Superintendent's overview.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor, Commissioner O'Connor. I appreciate it. If we could go to the next slide, the very first slide in the deck. Whenever we're talking about public schools, in the last two years, we have started with what is most pressing in the news, which is obviously how we are working our way through a pandemic and hopefully entering into an endemic, and then by 2023 perhaps have a sense of normalcy back in our schools. The data is very positive for St. Mary's County and for St. Mary's County Public Schools. I know that you get a bimonthly briefing from Dr. Mina Brewster, from the St. Mary's County Health Department. Obviously, we work very closely with Dr. Brewster, and we've seen our data trend in the right way. We have followed the CDC recommended protocols, the MDH recommended protocols, the Maryland State Department recommended protocols, the St. Mary's County Health Department recommended protocols for tracking and testing children and quarantining as need be. And really, we've seen the numbers go from the first full month of school, September, we had over 500 cases in a month of student positives. In the last month, the month of November, were about 80. So, we've decreased substantially. Last week, we only were in school for two days, but we only had a few cases the week before, 17 cases the week before, 30. It's a much more manageable number. So, the way out has been through successful mitigation, through layering of strategies to best protect against transmission, and most importantly, vaccination. And I know that certainly, as Dr. Brewster has come before you and spoken with you, it's so important to really encourage all people to get vaccinated, and in the last several weeks, we've seen the ability for 5- to 12-year-olds to get vaccinated, if their parents so elect, as well as 12- to 17-year-olds. And we see heartening data in those vaccination rates. And again, Dr. Brewster has shared, we're about 50% of all of our students 12- to 17 who've had at least one dose vaccination, and I think we're at about 15% for 5- to 12. We have offered several partnering opportunities to include offering vaccination with parental choice, parental option, parental approval in our elementary schools, and we did that right before Thanksgiving break, and we had over 400 students take advantage of that 414. Their second dose will then be coming up in the month of December, and those children in particular will be fully vaccinated by the time we roll into the winter break, which is obviously something that we all want to work toward. So, COVID update.
Of that 414, will you be offering round one again for those 5- to 11-year-olds who maybe missed round one?
We will be, we've only committed to doing round two in the schools.
Okay.
We do have several clinics that are going to be offered throughout the month of December at school sites to encourage people to come out, but we don't, the resources to be able to provide that service, the Health Department, to provide the staff to the individual schools is a pretty large lift to continue indefinitely. So, right now, we'll probably stick with about 414 kids that have been vaccinated within our schools. But that being said, there's been great response to the clinics and dedicated times that have been offered at the Hollywood Volunteer Fire Department and at Great Mills High School.
Dr. Smith, when we look at the COVID numbers in the schools, and we see somewhat alarming reports of high numbers in schools, it's important to note that that's over the entire length of the time, not one particular point in time.
Yes, and we have spent a bit of time working back with Baltimore Sun.
Okay.
And specifically, Ms. Liz Bowie, the reporter, to unpack where she got her information to report that St. Mary's County had over 100 active cases at Margaret Brent Middle School. That obviously was not factual. Margaret Brent Middle School has had 100 cases since the beginning of the year, only a handful in the last several weeks. So, I don't know where they are with their retraction, but I know that the St. Mary's County Health Department, Dr. Brewster as well, has been working back and forth with Ms. Bowie to understand the data that she was reporting on.
Thank you.
So, it's, the thing is, we have a wealth of information, and navigating it to get to an absolute truth sometimes is a bit of a challenge. As we tell everybody every two weeks at the board meeting, please visit our website directly, go directly to our data page that shows you exactly how many cases we have, students and staff, in real time at every one of our buildings. So, COVID update, check. Broadband initiative, I think it's important to bring this back around, and I know this has been a discussion topic that we've been circulating all the way through the pandemic, but it highlights the incredibly important work that we do with county government as we partner to solve problems. When the pandemic started and our schools shut down, we had to go to one-to-one with our children, and we recognized that we had many who were not connected to broadband internet, didn't have cable connections in their home. So, in partnering with, I know Mr. Kelly is there, and Mr. Howard, our Director of IT, is there as well. In partnering, we were able to take a grant, if you could go to the next slide, for a large amount of money, but in the grand scope of all the money that's been pushed towards COVID, a fairly modest amount of $1.5 million to partner and to work with to connect those homes that aren't connected to high-speed internet. And it partnered with and worked with your initiative to expand broadband service into areas of the county as well. The middle mile, and ultimately, the last mile, so that our kids and homes could be connected. And if we go to the next slide, the greatest information there and the greatest news is that as of September 2021, 98% of our homes with students residing had access to high-speed internet through cable connections. So, that's a pretty fantastic number. The next bit of work that has to happen is to make sure that even though they have that ability to connect in that connection, that they actually have the resources to be able to connect. And that is the last, next slide, which is the way in which Atlantic Broadband and Comcast Emergency Broadcast Benefits have partnered to put together to have affordable options for parents to have their homes connected to the internet. That's the one thing that we've definitely seen through all this pandemic, is that that is indeed how we are doing the work moving forward, as we were compelled to not see each other face to face. That being said, this isn't as important as it once was, because we are in person, and we have been in person throughout, since the beginning of this year. And I will tell you that the one thing that we know for sure is that there is nothing more important than our children being able to go to school every single day and see one another and interact with their teachers, and their peers, and coaches, and counselors, and so forth. So, enrollment, the next slide. I know every single year, we want to know exactly how we're doing with enrollment. The last two years have been inordinately challenging, as some kids stayed home, some parents chose to homeschool, some parents chose to enroll in private schools, some people just moved out of the county. When we go back to normal, September 30th, 2019, that's the 1920-2020 school year, 2021- 2020 school year, our enrollment for funding was 17,137. We then had almost another thousand students who were in pre-K or Head Start programs. So, we had, that was kind of the high watermark for the school system. We had over 18,000 students attending class. Last year, in a very challenging, are the kids here, are they not, where are they going, what have you, we saw an official verified enrollment of 16,722 students, then adding only 500 students in pre-K Head Start, for an overall enrollment of 17,246. For this year, we see our children returning to school, but we don't see them returning in the numbers that we saw in 2019-2020. We are still down from that high watermark of 18,000 students. In fact, we are slightly lower than we were last year, with only 16,715 fully enrolled for funding FTE count students. And that's predominantly because we had elementary students, they're not coming back to school. That could be a whole host of decisions that parents are making. They could be keeping them and homeschooling them. They could be enrolling them in private parochial schools. What we do see is that we are still down. So, our elementary enrollment from 2019 was 779. It is currently 7389. So, we haven't had all those children come back. In fact, we're 11 students fewer than we were last year in the pandemic. For middle school, we were over 4,100 students in 2020, and we're down to just under 4,000 students in this current year. So, I don't believe that people have moved out of the county. We certainly don't see that in our demographic numbers for the county, so these are just choices that parents are making. Ultimately, will they come back to public education? I believe so. And we see, the only real increase that we see is at the high school level, where we have actually more students than we've ever had enrolled in our high school, 92 kids to the positive. So, it's going to, it is, it's going to be a forever conversation about where kids are. We are doing an adequacy, facility adequacy study this year. We're having people come out and really taking a look at all of the different elements in St. Mary's County and talk about long-term planning for capital investment in structures, in buildings, and in moving forward. You know very well that we purchased a piece of property where ultimately the intent was to build a new elementary school. The number's remaining as they are right now. There's no necessary need to build an elementary school for this foreseeable future until we see trends reverse and come back into the public schools. So, enrollment, we'll be obviously giving a more detailed update as we go forward with the budget process and with the state calculations, as they work through maintenance of effort and all of that per pupil, and we give all those numbers in December. So, you'll be getting a deeper dive and a deeper look at that as we move forward.
Dr. Smith, in that regard, I sit on the Mako Education Subcommittee up in Annapolis, and we're starting to just have these quiet discussions on enrollment. Now, last year, the school systems were held harmless.
Yes.
Because of the COVID.
Yeah.
I've not heard that coming through this year, but it may be, have you heard anything?
We, that is, we're trying to get that information out of the state, because ultimately, that would be, and most counties are in a similar situation as St. Mary's. They have not seen their enrollments come back to 2019-2020 levels. And so, there's obviously, I think legislatively, there's going to be another big push to hold harmless, which of course throws off the entire funding calculation for everybody, because we are, all funding for public education is formula-driven.
Exactly.
And it's driven by enrollment. And the blueprint and all of that, that we're going to finish with that discussion, is again predicated on formula funding, and no one has modeled out the actual money that will be coming to school systems for the upcoming year, which makes it exceptionally challenging to build a responsible and appropriate budget. There's a lot of discussion about the blueprint funding way up here, but in the reality, when we actually get those numbers, I think that's going to be a much more modest amount. So, we're going to have to measure our hope against a much more conservative number. So, that is enrollment. The last thing I want to talk to you today is about transportation. It has certainly been the headline news across the United States, across Maryland, where we have, first, we had a substantial shortage of available bus drivers, and then, once some of that was reconciled, we had, in the state, we had drivers deciding that their rate of compensation was not competitive and electing to sick out. So, what I want to do is just spend a quick moment, I know that all of you know this, I know that our board knows this, but anybody watching at home, we do not employ bus drivers or bus attendants. We are a contractor system. We have 42 school bus contractors that we have contracts every single year. There are 193 contracted bus routes that require a driver each day. Of the 193 daily routes, 29 are special needs, and so there's an attendant on those buses as well to help with the children on the bus. So, the contractors provide 164 regular route, school buses, 29 special needs buses, and then they also hold 55 spare school buses in the event that something breaks down, there's an accident, we need an additional bus because we have a field trip or we're doing something extended day. So, there's 55 spare school buses that we, that they carry. It is just like the way we are funded through the county government and through the state. It is by a formula, and the foremost salient parts of that formula are PVA, which is a per-vehicle allotment, because buses are exceptionally expensive. They used to be about $80,000 or $90,000, and now they're about $120,000. There's the maintenance rate to run the buses, and that becomes more and more expensive, and as things, as costs escalate, certainly the maintenance of these much more advanced buses increases. There's the hourly labor rate for the driver and the attendant, and then there's an overall operations payment and cost that we provide to the contractors for providing the service, for overseeing all of that, for working on, to actually run the buses every single day. Of our budget, $16 million this year goes directly to the contractors of these routes. About $3.3 million for PVA, about $3.4 million for maintenance, almost $6 million for drivers, and $755,000 for attendance, and about $1 million for operations.
Mr. Smith, of those contractors, do they negotiate then with each bus driver individually?
So, there, so, within the contractor group, there is no negotiations. The contractors are the employers, and they determine the rate of pay for the drivers and the attendant.
That's what I mean, just like in the DOD world, I'm a contractor, if I want to pay UX, I'll pay UX, I'll pay Y. So, you pay the contractor, and then the contractor negotiates with each of their drivers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, next slide, please. Oh, sorry, you're already there. So, the contract, so every single year, as we're building the budget, we start with going to the contractor group and the Contractor Association. It is an association, does have a president and a vice president. We work across the contractor groups, and we say to the contractors, what do we need to be considering for the upcoming, next year's 2023 budget? You know, obviously, you're going to, everybody always looks for an escalating cost, and so, what is it, why is it, and how do we understand it? So, earlier in the year, they came forward with a request to increase the maintenance rate by about $400,000, because the maintenance rate on buses is escalating as parts are more difficult, as labor goes up, as everybody's seeing all of those costs, it escalates. They originally said we need to pay our drivers more. We said what's most appropriate is to give them a matching 5%, because that's approximately what we have for our seismic group. It's a step, which is 3%, and a 2% cola, that's what's in the negotiated agreement. So, we said we'll match that for drivers and attendants, and that's about $491,000 to do that. And then, an operations payment, because they recognize that they're carrying a lot more need to actually have administrative function and to work all of this and coordinating. It's quite a challenge, and they ask for about $140,000 there, as well as just the transportation costs. As the price of fuel goes up, we cover the price of fuel. So, about $1.5 million. And at that point, we had, it was a very productive conversation. We've built those numbers into the budget, and we're moving forward. Now, as that all happened over the last two months, we've seen, next slide, please, driver sickouts, Anaronda County, Calvert County, Charles County, Howard County, Baltimore County, protests, Prince George's County, protests, they're actually, they're drivers, we've seen, we've seen all that, all of that in interruption of service for our children. So, children not being able to get to school. Next slide, please. On top of that, Calvert County, on October 29th, sat down with a group of drivers, they don't have an association, but they sat down with a group of drivers, and Dr. Curry, and I believe their board chair, and perhaps a representative from county government, agreed to pay $2.6 million additionally in this year to reconsider the entire driver rate, hourly rate, and it was $18 to $23, and to move it to $23 to $33 an hour. Now, we don't do that, we just, we offer a flat rate. We just say, you get $21 an hour for your driver, and you decide whether you want to give some drivers 18 and some drivers 24, but we just give you a flat amount. Calvert County is going to actually do a staggered amount based on years of driving, starting at $23 and going up to $33 an hour. Moreover, they said they were going to do that retroactively to the beginning of the year, and then carry it out to the end of the year.
Dr. Smith, the question I have on that, though, is it contractually bound that the employer is required to only pay $21 and nothing more?
I don't know the minutia of their contract. Our contract with drivers just says we're going to pay you this amount of money, and then you decide how you're going to do it. I don't know.
Contractors, not with drivers.
No, with the contractors. Contracts, yeah. So, with Calvert, I don't know how they're going to monitor that. I don't know how they're going to, for the life of me, I don't really know how that's going to be implemented. Moreover, $2.6 million is an exceptionally modest, when we took that same, and you add your fringe, so your fringe, they have a fringe of 23%, we have a fringe of 26.5. And you add fringe on top of that, $28 to $40 an hour. If we were to do that rate of compensation for our drivers, it's, we calculated it'd be $3.8 million. So, I don't even know where they're getting their 2.6, but for us to do it, it'd be $3.8 million.
Actually, what I was getting at is that, you know, the, there's, the monies that are allocated in the budget, the school system is basically saying that this is the range up to 21 is what we'll give you, but the contractor, the actual employer, with whatever monies that are in the budget, has the authority.
Right.
Within whatever profits they may have, or their business model, to say that they want to pay more for these drivers, and that employer has the ability to create a pay scale for their drivers as well, because they are the employee of that contractor. Okay.
Eric, you're speaking about our system, not about Calvert.
Correct. The St. Mary's County system, not the other ones. I can't speak to theirs, yeah.
And I don't know enough about their contract. So, I believe Charles is going to go, it looks like they're leaning towards something similar. I don't, the school system does not have that level of oversight over what the contractor does with the funds that are provided to them. So.
Yeah, that's basically where I was getting, that there was, they had, ultimately, they run the business, they have the ability to do what they need to with the funds to appropriately take care of their buses, their drivers, things like that.
Okay. But most importantly, they're doing a mid-year substantial change, and it will have, if they are to maintain this same rate next year, then it, they have to find the money recurring, they were all, they're all using one-time money this year, so they're going to have to find all the recurring, either way, that's on that side of the bridge. On this side of the bridge, if you go to the next slide, we recognize that we need to do something, certainly to recognize our drivers and our contractors, particularly because our drivers have not had a sick out. Our drivers, you know, we started the year with, without enough full-time drivers, so there were substitute drivers. They've done, they've done an amazing job. They have made sure every single day that every single child is transported to and from school, and done so in an orderly and appropriate, and we have, I think, some of the very best drivers and contractors in the state of Maryland, if not in the United States. So, we want to do something to recognize them. We aren't going to go back, a contract's a contract. They're under a contract. We're not going to modify a contract mid-contract, period. But what we said is, let's go back and take a look at the available funds that we have, and in particular, we got guidance from the Maryland State Department of Education after they got guidance from the USDE about ESER funds, all of these ESER funds, saying specifically that ESER funds can be used for driver retention incentives. And that came, I think, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, right before, a week or so before Thanksgiving break. So, we have ESER 1, ESER 2, ESER 3. ESER 2 is about $12 million, and it's particularly allocated, we allocated it for summer school and after-school programming. We went back, we reworked the entire budget, we looked at what we spent this summer, what we anticipate spending for the next two summers in after-school programs, we looked at a whole bunch of things, and we realized we can rewrite that grant. And in rewriting that grant, we can extract about $2.6 million, and $2.6 million allows us, the school system, the Board of Education, and if you approve the modification, to provide to all of the contracted bus drivers, $2,500 right before winter break, $2,500 right before summer, $2,500 next year right before winter break, and $2,500 at the end of the year right before the summer break. That amount of money would equate approximately to $4 or $5 more per hour if you worked out all the, but being paid in a large lump sum, I think would be of great benefit. Moreover, we recognize that with our contractors, we not only give them the $2,500, but we also include the 26.5% fixed fringe cost as well. So, the contractor is not out any money to provide this dollar amount directly to the drivers. And we do absolutely expect the contractor to deliver to the drivers, without exception, $2,500. Moreover, and before you, since we had to go before you to move this money from a restricted account into our operational budget this year, we also wanted to go back and recognize that the contractors put forth a pretty legitimate concern about the escalating maintenance costs on the buses, so we would like to go into our fund balance that's set aside for transportation specifically, and pull out, if you go to the next slide, I'm sorry, well, it's really two slides after that. So, if you go to the next slide, about $228,000, so that we can increase the maintenance rate for our drivers from January 1 to the end of the year, in anticipation of the rate for our drivers from January 1 to the end of the year in anticipation of the revised maintenance rate that we're moving forward with our budget in the 2023 school year. So we recognize that there'll never, there'll never be enough to truly thank the people for doing the work that they do. No matter what you can provide, always somebody's gonna say, well, it should be a little more of this. We're gonna be compared apples to apples and oranges to oranges, but this is something that we can absolutely do. I do think staff worked really, really hard to rewrite an entire grant to then put it to MSD, so the Maryland State Department of Education, so that they could turn around and approve the grant amendment so it could come back so that today, the board, if they make a motion on this action item, and then turn it over to you and you make that and you approve that action, then we would be able to move forward with the processing to be able to provide every single one of our contracted drivers stipend of $2,500 before the winter break this year.
So before you move, could you please, I'm looking at the ESER grant amendment. So basically, you're making categorical adjustments to all the various categories here.
Yes.
To come up with the money.
Yes.
So obviously, there's a lot of ESER money out there.
Well, and if I could have Ms. McCourt join us. The, keep in mind that the ESER money is over $50 million that's been provided to us since the beginning of the pandemic and lasts until 2023, 24. So there is a, a lot of money that we've received. And so we, there, we have built budgets for all of it to provide services throughout the school year and after-school and summer school. And so this is just a modification of what we'd be proposing for summer school in particularly, in particular. So if I, with Ms. McCourt?
Certainly. So under the ESER 2 grant, it totaled $11.6 million and we had that built out over three years and I provided communication on that to Dr. Bridgette a couple of weeks ago. The grant end date for that is September 30th of 2023. And for the first summer program, we had already expensed $2 million. So we had remaining $9.5 million of which were requesting the reallocation for the $2.6 million. So we'll still be able to stand up a summer school program for the next two summers within this grant as well as the after-school program that was originally planned.
So with the movement around, you're not gonna see a hit to any of your programs?
No, no. We're still gonna be maintaining a summer school program next year for the next two summers as well as an after-school program for this year and next year.
Thank you.
The largest, the largest modification really is gonna be the, the summer school program that we put in place this year. It was, it was massive and it was over six weeks long and it was in-person and hybrid and virtual. And so we, we, we basically threw the entire kitchen sink at the, at the summer program. And, and we, we know some things worked really well and some things probably could be done more economically. So really, what we're gonna be doing with moving forward is instead of doing a six-week plus summer school program, we'll go back to a traditional summer school model, which is about four weeks.
And before we do anything else, we, we had some technical difficulties earlier and I just want to recognize that Commissioner President Guy has been on the line.
Okay.
And he's on the line, he's joined us and if we're, we're still good on the technicals. Up, there we go. So, there it is. So Commissioner President, I didn't know if you had anything that you wanted to add to this discussion since we got you loud and clear.
I'm glad the Board of Education's super kind of funded money to, to help us out this coming next couple of years and hopefully their negotiations in the next couple of years will be a smooth one.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I also want to say, looking at these numbers, these aren't minimal numbers and these, these all are very important programs that have essentially been cut in order to facilitate this. And I think, you know, people should really take a look at this and, and what you guys have done to make this happen. I mean, instructional salaries and wages and we're talking about teachers at 1.1 million, you know, and spe, special education at nearly half a million dollars. So I know the legwork was there and it was a lot of work, so I appreciate it and I'm, I'm sure there'll be people that are thankful for, especially before the holidays.
Absolutely. So with that, I defer to.
Okay.
Chair President Bailey?
On our side, since this is the first that this item has been presented to the Board of Education, we'll have to approve it through our process first and then Commissioner O'Connor, I'll toss it over to your side. So may I have a motion for the recommended proposed action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the presented categorical amendment and increase of the FY 2022 budget.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All right. Since we haven't had a chance, did we have any discussion among our board members for any of the questions for either Dr. Smith or Ms. McCourt? Okay, all right. Then may I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion is carried.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Good for you.
Now that the Board of Education has approved their motion, I'll entertain a motion from the Commissioners?
I move that the Commissioners of St. Mary's County approve the categorical, categorical amendment as presented by the BOE and increase the FY 2022 budget of the St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, no, seeing no opposition, the motion carries.
So before I conclude my remarks, I just would like to say thank you very much. This was done the right way. And doing it the right way takes a lot of steps and it requires everybody to work together. And that's the one thing that we have really, it's really been fantastic about St. Mary's County, I think through this whole pandemic, is all hands in, everybody working together to, to do what we need to do to move forward. And this is a fantastic example of it. So just thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And now we have Capital Improvement Projects with Ms. Howe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to do something a little different today. Normally, I'm here asking for project funding and approvals. So today, what we thought we would do is go through a little of the projects that are coming to completion to show how that we have used those funds to benefit, benefit our students and our communities. So the first slide, Dynott Elementary School's HVAC and roof is a project that started during COVID and is coming to a close. And we, we're still experiencing a little bit of supply chain issues. So the project is coming to completion. We do have some things like generators and underground storage tanks that are a little harder to get, so those will be coming in the summer. That project really did make a big difference, I think. Commissioner Kovan, I think you, our Connor, you commented on how much, when you go in and you look at what we took out and were able to make a change. So Ms. LaIno is our Director of Construction, Design and Construction, she's sitting behind me. When we collaborate on these projects, we really do want to maximize the state opportunity for the funding. When we go in and look at just an HVAC and a roof, we look at all the communication systems, the PA, fire alarms that are gonna be exposed. So when these projects, when we talk about them, they really are all encompassing and really make a big difference. The other side of that is the flooring and paving and we worked a couple of years together collaboratively to really create the programmatic and critical project line items, which you have in your budget. And they're making a huge difference in our facilities and keeping this up to date. So our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Whitten, is responsible for a lot of those projects and he and I coordinate on a regular basis about the priorities and how we're going to move them forward. And I just wanted to give you an example for the flooring and paving. We were able to do flooring at Chopticon High School Esperanza, Lenartown High School and Piney Point. And we did the paving at Chopticon High School. And the difference that those improvements make to not only our students when we're, when they're at school, but the ability to keep the maintenance budget moving forward as well, parts there are hard to get, costs are rising. So these projects really do make a difference in our long-term strategic plan to maintain the investments that are originally made when we build our schools and to extend their life.
Excuse me for just a moment, Ms. Howe, I apologize for interrupting. Currently, we're having some internet and phone difficulties at St. Mary's County Government. We're working to reestablish them, but we do apologize for any interruptions. This meeting is being recorded and it will continue to play as soon as we go forward. Thank you.
Okay, so the next slide. So Green Holly Switchgear and HVAC, major construction on this is complete and staff is working on commissioning of the HVAC system. And this is one where we collaborate again with maintenance and the design and construction staff. Commissioning on the chiller system was not able to be done before it was brought online, so that will be brought online this spring and the commissioning will be done before that happens. This is another project. What we have done with these is we have spread them out. Green Holly is a very large building. It encompasses two schools at one time that have been connected. And what we're working with the state is on modernizing each of the sides as we proceed forward. And their collaboration on, again, on these projects to ensure that we're meeting all of the other needs in terms of our fire alarms, PA system, security systems, truly makes a big difference as we, we move forward. On the right side of that slide is highlighting Ridge Window Replacement. And these are some projects that we are very excited that we're able to move forward. They're part of our Safety and Security Initiative. Ridgeton Creek and White Marsh had single pane glass windows that went back to their original construction in the 1950s.
I've heard about it.
So from an energy efficiency standpoint, an aesthetic standpoint, an efficiency standpoint and a safety standpoint, these projects have been on, on my mind in particular for a very long time. And we were able to, to work through them and now we have the double pane glass. So we've got very energy efficient, beautiful windows that are, are going to really benefit us for the long time. And at the completion of the project, the safety glass was installed as well. So this does eliminate the bulk of, there might be a window or two left, but we have replaced the single pane windows across our school system and truly made a difference in our energy efficiency and aesthetics for the students that are in those spaces. Next project is one that we are very excited about. We've talked about this, I'm gonna date myself. And I've been with the system for 31 years and we've been talking about this project since I, I started. So we're very excited that Mechanicsville Limited Renovation has begun and construction documents have been finalized. Ms. LaIno and her team are pre-qualifying the contractors as we speak and bid documents are tentatively scheduled to go out this, this December. So at the end of December, this is a project that with the state, we're really maximizing the state funds. And as time has gone on, this, you know, they've started to pay for design and construction and furniture and equipment and we'll start to see that. But what you're gonna notice on this project, and you've seen them starting to happen, it was always said that the state paid 50%, but they really didn't pay 50%. They paid 50% of the construction. But starting kind of with this project and move, moving forward, you're gonna see that the budget is actually almost 50/50. So for this project, we're at 5.7 for the county and we're at 5.5 for the state. Because they're going to start picking up some of those other costs, the 50% really will show in the full budget across the system. So this project is one that is gonna have high visibility, being the first school that you will see when you enter St. Mary's County. And we are excited to get this one going and hopefully, construction will be starting this summer. On the next slide, just wanted to give you an idea of where we are. We have a lot of projects that are coming up and this just gives you a schedule. I don't need to go through all of it unless you have some specific questions. But what this shows is the projects that we currently have laid out and their bid schedule and where they're proceeding forward. Up next, we're going to have Town Creek's HVAC systemic. And at the time I did this slide, it was in schematics. It's already moved on to the next phase of DDs and heading to CDs with bids going out in February of 2022. Lenny Marshall Dent Modernization, the pre-design study is complete for that and they're getting ready to start the design and working with the AEs starting in December of 2021. Great Mills High School's partial roof systemic, the next phase of that roof scheduled for, to, to begin with AE team in August of 2022 as well as the Piney Point HVAC. And what you'll see is we then have projects, pretty much, we have two in designer-construction phase and then two moving forward. So we're trying to keep two projects moving at a time. As we come down, we have a lot of work this summer and this gets to the coordination of school activities. We have a lot of things that are going on in those, critical and programmatic. This summer, we are looking at Green Munols Elementary School paving, Ridge air handlers, the Piney Point generator will be this winter going into, to spring, the White Marsh Elementary School fuel oil line, flooring at several schools as well as paving at several schools. So we're able to use that funding very efficiently during the summer to move projects forward. And then in addition, we have the summer age and floor study. So these are the projects we've been talking about in our work sessions and our presentations to you and hopefully will receive approval and move forward. On the next slide, we've kind of talked about this when I've been here in the, in the last couple of months, but I do want to let you know that things are still moving forward. As Dr. Smith highlighted, we are doing a facility utilization study that is currently in progress and we're working well with the consultant and getting a lot of data. And that will be a comprehensive review of all of our facilities and how they're currently utilized and some recommendations on what we could possibly do in the future to utilize them even better. Still working on the Built to Learn Act funds, as we've shared, we have $16 million estimated for St. Mary's County Public Schools. We have started the Project Scope Study for Chopticon High School, which is the first project that we're anticipating applying for those funds. And the counterparts that I've been talking to throughout the state, through the MAB Association Facility Group, there are no MOUs currently in place yet, but there are a lot that are projects that are in works, that they're still working through the Maryland Stadium Authority. We're on top of that, we're trying to, to share that data and to, to learn from what others are already experiencing as we start to develop our MOUs that will be required with the IAC and the Stadium Authority. We're reviewing our list. As we finish this facility utilization study, it gives us an opportunity to go back and look at our, our CIP schedule and how we can make adjustments to utilize funds that are out there. So we will be looking at the 70 million that is ear-tagged in FY 22 for healthy school facility funds and looking at what projects we have. The determination has been made, the HVAC projects will qualify. So that is something we will definitely take into consideration. And then the assessment and work, and funding work group, the legislative is continuing to meet. They're reviewing the workload and timeline right now. One thing that they did determine last month is that the state's assessment, the facility condition index that was developed will not be utilized for funding decisions until FY 2025. There's a lot of information that still needs to be worked through on that data and to, to ensure that it is meeting the needs as defined by the, the legislative group. So they're continuing to work and if anything comes out of that, I will keep you updated as we go forward. But all of the study that they did will, will definitely benefit and, and put the need out for what there is across the system, but they do have some things they need to finalize on that. So with that, if I'm here, if you have any questions or we're gonna talk about.
Ms. McCourt, the healthy school facility funds, that's 70 million statewide, correct?
That is not ear-tagged just for us, it's 70 million across the state.
So is that gonna be by project or you think it'll be formula-driven again?
Almost everything with the state is going to be formula-driven with the exception of the Built to Learn Act, which was formula-driven, which ear-tagged money for us. There have been several projects already approved through the healthy schools and it is more of a competitive basis. But I do believe every county will receive some funds if they submit.
So if we use our usual 2.5%, that's what we can expect to see?
I'm, I'm anticipating yes, around that much. I definitely think we can get a large HVAC project funded through healthy, healthy school funds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to bring up Mr. Arthur Shepherd, our Director of Parks and Rec, and Mr. Michael Watson, Director of Facility Coordination, Health and Physical Education and Athletics for our discussion on turf fields, recs, parks and our amazing partnership.
Thank you. You know, it's been over 50 years that Recreation and Parks has partnered with St. Mary's County Public Schools for positive youth development for our students and children and for families. And I'm delighted here recently in working with Mike Watson and his, his talent and his passion for public schools and in particular, St. Mary's County Public Schools. So I'm gonna let him kick us off with what's really, what's, what anybody that's listening can see about use of schools in their document, how, how it is favors Recreation and Parks. And then I'll highlight some other areas of general recreation, what it's meant, COVID's meant to school age centers, youth basketball, just sign up, some corollary sports, how the schools use our facilities. And then we're gonna slide, end up with the turf fields and some other enhancements and uses of schools. So Mr. Watson, if you'll take care of that first slide for us.
Sure, well, thank you, Mr. Shepherd. I also appreciate Mr. Shepherd and his advice, counsel and our partnership that's been ongoing for numerous years. So just want to reiterate that, what Mr. Shepherd said, that we do have policy and regulations that govern our use of school facilities by community organizations. We do have a strong. We do have a strong partnership with Wreckin Park. Anyone in our community who registers as a school user can certainly use our school facilities to some degree. They certainly have to go through our process, which is becoming a campus user on our web application, School Dude. With that being said, that organization also has to carry a certain amount of liability insurance. We have our use of school facilities and our community brochure online on our website that's accessible to anyone. Anything that they have, that they hold at the schools has to be public in nature, cannot interfere with any part of the school day or any bona fide school activity and of course are appropriate for a, a, a school setting. So as Mr. Shepherd indicated, Wreckin Park has top priority after all school-based activities, school-based groups and school-sponsored organizations. So we love our partnership with them. They utilize our facilities. We utilize their facilities. It's been a great partnership and I look forward to continuing it in the, in the future and beyond.
Thank you. And our next slide.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Watson. This has been a long discussion that we've been having about the use of the school facilities. And I think it's really good that we're coming to a stage that I think if you go back one slide, or the slides right there, facilities and grounds for community activities and events. We have a schools. The schools are open eight hours a day. There's 24 hours in a day, as we well know. But the fact that we're able to, we're, we're coming to a stage now, we're able to use the schools and the facilities for more than just the Wreckin Parks events, brother events. I know we worked with Burrell real hard over the summer to have him bring his program into the schools because you have gyms just sitting there doing nothing. Where are these kids going to go? Well, Burrell brought the program in and we experimented and Shep and I had a lot of conversations with him and I know you did too. And, and Burrell came through and I'm really happy that that program was such a success. And the fact of the matter is we can go down forward in the future, knowing that we had a test case. It worked out real well. We can use it for other programs, other community events and things like that because we have a number of schools spread throughout the county that, you know, people want to be able to use and get into. And I think it's really good. And then compounded with that, with the relationship we've had to get these new turf fields built for the tracks and all those kids and all schools are getting them right now and there can't be, I shouldn't say can't be. I hope there's no complaining out there. I'm sure there's going to be complaining because all the kids got a turf field at the high schools, but everybody's being treated equally across the board. And so I want to thank you, Mike, for what you're doing, Shep for what you're doing and, and getting the schools, you know, more transparent to be able to be used because they are paid for tax, by taxpayer dollars and they're paid with taxpayer dollars to support them at the same time. So thank you very much.
I know we'll talk about a little bit later, but Dr. Hyble, Principal Great Mills is more than happy to hold the, the summer program that Shep ran down there this past summer. So thank you to him and his staff for facilitating that as well.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I did see Dr. Hyble the other day and we spoke about that and, and the joy of that. So one of the big things in, in use of schools for all these years, well, not all these years, the last 30 is before and after schools care, school age centers. That's very important. And this speaks to Dr. Smith's comment about elementary school students. Now we, pre-COVID, we had 310 children enrolled in our school age centers. And currently we have 180 enrolled. Now, some of that's due to the children not coming back. But also we had the, we have the issue of staff, quality staff being available. Now, we did, we did have some of our American Rescue Funds to work with that, to grow that staff. So it looks like we're, right now we're in three schools in the Hollywood Recreation Center. And in January, we looked to be in either Letty Dent or Leonard Town Elementary to add another facility for that important school age care. Basketball, big winter time thing. We just enrolled pre-COVID 1300. We're at 1100 now. Not a bad number. I'm delighted to get there. I didn't know if we'd even get there. And, you know, to be able to use the buildings, we'll be in masks with our spectators, but people in active recreation and, and rigorous activity can be without a mask. And you see some other things as the summer camp program that went off very well. Volunteer Sports League, we're, we're there at the baseball fields, the softball fields, the ball dimes in the schools utilizing them throughout the county. Our summer stock theater, as you know, well, wow, what a, what a, what a thing that we've been offering since 1986. And now some on the Sunday afternoon, sellout crowds of over 700 for those. The past two years, we've only been signed one of the two. We had a reading of some old, some old time songs. That's not a good word for me to use. So, well, just way back and, and it worked. Y'all excuse me now. So it, but it worked. But this last year, what we had was a live concert reading right on the stage, but instead of the full show. And it was well received by the community, but more than anything, those students had a chance to be in the arts, be with their colleagues, be with their friends throughout the summer. And it proved itself well. And the tennis camps and what we use, the tennis courts and the different things and the sports camps. Now, currently, we, through the use of the schools, we're allowed, we're in the schools until nine, can be in the schools till 9:00 P. M. During the week at no cost. Weekends, when, when public schools brings in additional building service workers, staff to be there, part of the eight-hour, 10-hour days for basketball and that we pay for that use. And this past year paid $46,000 reimbursed for the use of schools for those programs. And that's all incorporated in the fee for the programs. We also support them by some of our facilities. You see the new Wellness and Aquatic Center. We'll be having the fifth grade water safety program, the Great Mills Pool. Is utilized there by Great Mills. One of the things we left off of here though is the Wycomico Shores Golf Course, the Choptikon High School golf teams there. So a lot of things, activities that we also partner with them and we're going to talk about how we're going to partner with turf fields here in a moment. But the aquatic sports now, we've opened up, we're getting ready to open fully, but just the new park there in Lexington Park, the former Flat Tops, the Lexington Manor Passive Park. And I want Mr. Watson to come speak again about the corollary sports that we recently held there, the public schools did through disc golf and their cycling event. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Mr. Watson, may I interrupt you for a second, just to let you know that the internet and the phone service are back up. I T department is working very, very hard to stabilize, but things are back up and running. And we'll be working to get Commissioner President back on the line in just a bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to note, Commissioners, he's on the line the old-fashioned way. He's on the speaker of my cell phone.
That's right.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bridget.
Our corollary sports program, we, we offer bocce in the spring. We are, I'm sorry, we offer cycling in the fall. We offer bowling in the winter and we typically offer cycling in the spring. We have, we didn't, we're not able to do cycling last year due to COVID, but we were able to do disc golf, which was really exciting because as Mr. Shepherd stated, we have a, a disc golf course down there in Lexington Park. And so we had a wonderful event last year. You see the middle picture there, a nice group of kids that came down and took advantage of, of the brand new park there. And since that park has even had more upgrades and beautification. We typically hold our cycling event on a three-notch trail. However, at the new park that Mr. Shepherd mentioned, there is a, I want to say a quarter mile, half mile kind of track down there that is just a much safer environment for our students, all of our corollary sports students, all of our parents who attend the event, all of our staff, including Ms. Rautzen, who's our coordinator of adaptive physical education and corollary sports. So just what a wonderful, beautiful addition that new park is. And we plan to hopefully use that and utilize that park for many of our events this year and in future years as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. It was, it was a great day. Students there, I saw the, the joy. I saw the parents, the like. It was, it was an appropriate facility use. But I have to acknowledge the Commissioners on this one. You know, when you take that former Flat Tops, you had a disc golf care course there, but trees were about to fall over in just a space. And then you, you approved a master plan in 2019 and then you came back and partnered with the state and money and funded that and had the vision to do that. Now you have a place that's special for all of Lexington Park, partnering with public schools. The disc golf is going to be a place that we bring in tournaments and just so much more there. And I've worked with, and then our top partners, which is the Unified Committee for Afro-American Contributions, Southern Maryland Disc Golf Sierra Club, the Arts Council, Mr. Maher here with Three Notch Theater. All those partners there is going to make this a live place for all users. And what I've already seen in the amount of walkers and joggers in that park, very excited about it. Close to, close to hitting the finish line, but here are therapeutic camps. Think about that. New Horizons Camp, Mr. Colvin, you're very familiar with those and Camp Inspire. And the partnership, now true partnership here, use of schools, schools invest financial contribution there. The food service program is now through M S D E and managed out of the school system. Transportation, while we have payment toward that, they manage that. Mr. Thompson, they take care of that. And we share school nurses to utilize there to make sure that there's appropriate supervision through Recreation and Parks, resources. And these two camps, Inspire and Horizons, we haven't been able to do those, but we'll be coming back this summer and we're very delighted with that. But this is a true partnership for a continuum and for our children, continue excels, our families to receive respite and for the quality of life that's needed for, for children that have special needs. So thank you, public schools and Board Education for that. That's a delight working with you there very, very much. A true delight. New collaborations, new collaborations. We're getting ready to cross the line. The 90-foot baseball diamonds. Now you don't see a public school diamond there. I just probably wanted to show off Chancellor's Run Regional Park is what I wanted to do. So y'all, but that's, that's a 90-foot diamond at Chancellor's Run, but working with staff, Mr. Watson, the Board Education now that are 14-year-olds to 20-year-olds through American Legion now can utilize 90-foot diamonds, puts that into the inventory of, of quality, appropriate fields. Turf fields, we have a slide just for that. And I know, I know with that dirt turn and Mr. Watson, he can't wait to show that slide. So I'm not going to say anything. But I can't, but I will say this, nine fields in St. Mary's County, never, a guy that drew up, grew up in St. Mary's County would have never believed that. And then positive youth development programming, that speaks to what you said earlier, Commissioner, with what we had this past summer enrichment program there at Great Mills High School and looking for some more of that. And I'm going to finish up with that slide. But Mr. Watson, if you'll come back on and tell us the status of where turf fields are and how we're going to partner together with the six in the county, the three at the schools and.
So I would see on screen, you see some renderings of what our three fields will look like here in the, in the next 90 to 100 days, hopefully. We have broken ground at Leonard Town High School yesterday. They did a lot of work. They piled and dug and all the dirt's in the middle of the field. They're trucking it out today. This morning, they broke ground at Great Mills High School. So the company is, is moving along quickly. So we're super excited about that. Obviously I am as well. We're been tweeting out pictures the last couple of weeks, non-stop and getting a lot of good responses and, and emails and phone calls about that. So I appreciate, you know, Mr. Shepherd's guidance on all of that as he went through that six separate times prior to the Wreckin Park fields with their turf. But we just continue to utilize each other and utilize each other's facilities. And the future, we've, we've all have heard for years that our parents have gone up the road for many tournaments over the weekend and had to get hotels and spent money in restaurants outside of St. Mary's County. And now hopefully with, you know, our six turf fields for Wreckin Park or three turf fields at the high schools with the, you know, the, the grandstands and the lights and the press boxes that we can start to offer those things to folks in our community. And we look forward to partnering with Wreckin Park on those endeavors.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Just like, I'm on the sidelines a lot and people ask me, how did I do that? And I, you know, I certainly, you know, I grin, but, and then even from Montgomery County, how did this happen? But the, but the truth of the matter is the Commissioners made investment. They made an investment to the citizens and monetarily through the funding. So as while I stand on the sidelines and people ask me how I do that, the truth of the matter, the Commissioners made the investment. You, you stood up for this, for the, for the citizens and for the future of, of youth sports and tourism and athletics in St. Mary's County, as well as the Board of Education here recently with their investment into St. Mary's County Public Schools. Those public school fields look good. I can't, can't wait to see those. Future enrichment programs, this is, this is, this is in the early, early negotiation talks, discussions with Mr. Watson and myself. And Mr. Morgan, he spoke to it, so he must have a heads up somewhere. But he spoke to it about use of schools more. We're in the schools. You see the guidelines. You heard what Mr. Watson said, but future enrichment programs, my, my thoughts now, as I'm beginning to think about schools and these great assets with gyms, a room for positive youth development and that, is maybe pick out four sites that we can focus on throughout the county, that the north, central, south and make, north, central and south, and maybe toward the Piney Point area or the Seventh District area. Those outliers there that we can hardware space and, and we'll work that out and work that out with you and the Board of Education and and Dr. Smith, is that there's places that people can use to get in that aren't through the main halls so that staff and public schools understand the safety and the access, that we, our staff now minimizes public safety and risk being in the school. But places where we can just have, that we can schedule, that we can look to bring programming in, people, families know it's open, that in the North County, and just early, I'm not making, for the site administrator at Ms. Buckler, not at all, the same, we're going there, but Letty Dent School, from the side, you come in, there's a gym, there's another room and there's restroom, so that that way, that can be a hub of activity for families and utilizing those schools that way. So I wanted to bring that up. Safe access, multiple purpose areas, restrooms, positive youth development, families, adult programming throughout and really utilizing these. And Mr. Watson and I are off to a great start and that might be something we can be bringing to you here within the next year. That's all we have today.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Watson. Next up, we have the Maryland Blueprint with Mr. Jeffrey Mayer. Oh, and Ms. Prattson as well.
So I think Ms. Prattson is also going to be joining here too. If the, the theme of this morning's presentations is partnership, this is certainly something that's going to be a longstanding partnership as we implement the, the Maryland Blueprint. So again, I want to thank Ms. Prattson, who is our, our partner here in the county government, who's, who's really been a great sounding board as we look at what the, the blueprint legislation means for St. Mary's County Public Schools and public schools across Maryland. If we can go to the next slide. A resource here that we have put together for our community to stay abreast of what's happening with the blueprint is this Google site that is here. If you're at home and you want to just hold your phone up to the barcode, you can open the, the site there or the full link is there. But on this website, it has all the details of what's expected within the blueprint across the five policy areas, as well as additional resources that are built in here from the state and the full set of legislation. If we go to the next slide, I'll just give a little bit of background. The blueprint implementations actually started about five years ago. The Kerwin Commission or the Commission on Innovation and Excellence led by Dr. Brett Kerwin began in 2016 and its purpose was to really look at funding formulas and how funding is, is provided for public schools across Maryland. It also then expanded to include policy recommendations to look at what a, a top-level school system should look like across the state of Maryland. As a result, its recommendations turned into House Bill 1300, which was passed in 2020 with an overridden veto in 2021. And then House Bill 1372, which was a follow-on law passed to expand some of the, change some of the dates that were in there, provide some clarification, as well as provide some mitigation for COVID as a result. So just as I go through this, I'm going to be providing a very high-level overview of the blueprint because it's, it's a lot. The first law is about 230 pages. The second one is about 45 pages. So there's a lot of detail that I won't be able to go into, nor will we have the, you know, all the answers as we're starting to really digest what it means. And as there was a blueprint 2.0, it's likely that we could see a 3.0 or a 4.0 as legislation continues to clarify what's in the blueprint. So if we can go on to the next slide. There are five policy areas within the blueprint. It first addresses early childhood development and education, and I'm glad Dr. Hall is in the room too. She could be a phone friend if we have questions around that. Second is high quality and diverse teachers and leaders. You may have heard about career ladders that are embedded there. Third is rigorous college and career pathways. Fourth is funding and resources to ensure all students are successful, particularly addressing achievement gaps. And then finally, with, with great funding comes great accountability. So governance and accountability is that fifth tier, fifth level of, of, of the blueprint. So if we can go on to the next slide, again, the idea behind the blueprint is to transform and address areas of early childhood, primary, secondary education to look at Maryland as a high-performing school system, school system in this, in the, not only the nation, but in the world. And it builds to, the second big tier is the career ladder, which is a bigger, one of the bigger chunks within the blueprint. If we can go to the next slide. So I'm going to start with the fifth area, accountability first, because really that builds on where we develop our plan. So the, every school system is to develop a plan to submit to the state and its Accountability Implementation Board by June 15th. That timeline may change, but right now that's where it is. It has to include how we're going to address all areas of the blueprint. It has to include how we're going to address all areas of the blueprint, as well as specific things were added in the 2.0 legislation, particularly around behavioral health services, closing achievement gaps that were exacerbated as a result of the pandemic, looking at how we place students and staff to ensure their support, looking at additional funds for teacher collaborative time, so how we build in that professional learning systems for our staff. It requires a local implementation coordinator, so that's why I'm sitting in front of you, partnered with Ms. Prattson. It provides funding accountability, so the Accountability Implementation Board, which I'll talk about in just a second, will review all the plans as well as the funding, and we provide ongoing reports. In fact, we've already submitted one of them this year on how we're using that funding. The state has appointed an Accountability and Implementation Board. It's a seven-member panel. It was appointed October 1st. It just had its first meeting two weeks ago and another meeting yesterday, so they are just getting the wheels turning there. One of the things, for example, that they looked at is, first of all, recommending some extension of the timelines for the plans and other parts that are coming up very quickly, but also how they're going to review the plans, because the funding is tied to the implementation of these plans. The last piece of accountability that's in there is the concept of these expert review teams. And so, expert panels from around the state, including educators and educational experts, will visit every school across the state of Maryland, beginning with the lowest-performing schools first, so that every school will have a visit and a review and feedback over the next 10 years. We have no schools identified as the lowest-performing schools in the state, so we won't be in the first cut, but we will likely be in the upcoming ones. And if we can go to the next slide. So, if we look at early childhood education, the idea in this focus area of the policy area is to expand pre-K. We've done a really good job in expanding the slots for our pre-K and our Head Start programs in St. Mary's County, so we're well on our way to meet this. What it also does is it builds partnerships with the non-public pre-K programs, particularly in looking at what their quality standards are, their certification for their staff, and really bridging some of those programs with ours. We have really good partnership. I know Dr. Hall has a really good working relationship with our non-publics, and so we're on a good path there. It expands our duty centers. It looks at family support centers, programs for infants and toddlers, and expanded programs for our youngest of learners. And then finally, in this policy area, it requires the assessment of all kindergarteners in the kindergarten readiness assessment. Right now, it's done as a segmented population, and here, this would hit a universal assessment beginning next school year. If we go on to the next one. Teachers and leaders. So, this is a really big piece of the legislation. It starts with the preparation of our teacher education programs, and so our teacher prep programs. So, the, right now, a teacher, as they go through a teacher prep program, they take all their coursework, then they do student teaching or an internship in their senior year. Many programs have this as the last part, the second semester of their senior year. This expands it to a full-year internship. Now, we're very fortunate in that we have a program like that similar in St. Mary's County. The MAT program, the Master's of Arts program at St. Mary's College, has a full-year internship, and our, their students, their teachers in this program, they join our schools early on in the school year and participate throughout. So, that kind of program is what the state is looking to replicate. What it does mean is it may also mean that a typical education program could be closer to five years for a student rather than four. So, this increases that rigor of that pathway. It also increases the rigor of licensure, changing from the types of testing it uses, as well as the entry requirements into a teacher ed program. Now, when they come to us, one of the pieces in the blueprint is this concept of a career ladder. And so, it requires that all teachers, beginning in 2024, any new hires there, come in on a new career ladder. And this career ladder, I will go into in just a little bit of detail in just a minute, but essentially what it does, it puts teachers on a path for their growth, either as a teacher leader or an administrative leader. Compensation is a piece of this legislation as well, with a requirement of a 10% salary increase from the 2019 baseline. We're well on our way with that. We have a really good negotiated agreement that moves us forward in that way, so we're, I think, in better shape than many, many places, but still some work to go. In addition, it recognizes our nationally board-certified teachers, and we have about 35 of them in the district, which, effective July 1, their additional salary increment goes up by $10,000 for teachers who hold that national board certification. So, that would be beginning July 1, and there's additional salary enhancements if they're teaching at a low-performing school, too. So, it really values that national board certification as a gold standard, essentially. And then additionally, it provides more support and encouragement towards teacher collaboration and the professional learning. And so, if we go to the next slide, you can see, this is what the teacher ladder sort of looks like, where it starts at a certified teacher, then moves to a certificate, or, excuse me, the second tier is if they're working on national board certification or a master's degree, or additional credits, for example, if they're in a program that doesn't have a national board standard. Then they can, to get to level three, you have to earn that national board standard, and then you go to level four, which is your teacher leaders, and there's various levels of that. Or they go to administrator track, which is similar to what we know as our assistant principal or a principal level. And if we click one more time on this one, it gets really sloppy here, because what it also layers onto it is the amount of time that those teachers in these various tiers spend teaching direct instruction of a traditional classroom, how much they're doing other intervention or support programs, or how much time they're spending planning. So, this changes kind of how the staffing is assigned in a building, because it might require different times that they're teaching full classes and other times that they might be teaching smaller groups. It also layers onto it, once the career ladder is fully implemented, that administrators spend a period of their time teaching classes as well. If we go to the next slide. The next piece around that career ladder and our teacher, the teachers and leaders part, is looking at how we evaluate teachers. Now, currently, we use the Charlotte Danielson model that was put in place by us about 20 years ago, and 10 years ago by the Ed Reform Act in Maryland, through the Maryland General Assembly, that aligned our professional practice and our evaluations with that model. This shifts it to aligning to the national board. So, all teachers, while they're working towards national board, will also be evaluated upon similar standards, or evaluations will align with that. Secondly, it builds in a piece there for peer review and assistance. This is a model that's done in some places around the state where part of their evaluation process has teachers with a review by their peers, as well as their supervisors. It requires what's called a new model of professional development. We don't know what that looks like yet, but it'll be provided by MSDE. We're very fortunate, we have some very high-quality professional development programs in our system, so I think we're going to be in good shape with that. And then here, too, we have to report on our hiring practices relative to diversity. Now, this has been an ongoing focus for us, and so you've, I know we've done several presentations at our board around this, and it continues to be a focus. And then finally here, a goal of the blueprint is to reduce the student-teacher ratio. So, you can see here, just by the layering of all of these elements here around teachers and leaders, that it might affect how we do staffing, as well as how those staffing assignments are made. If we go to the next slide. Now, if we're going to move to the third tier, and I know I'm going rather fast, but I know we're a little bit short on time, so, which looks at college and career readiness. And so, one of the big areas that the state was looking at was making sure that our students, when they enter high school, that they're on a path towards graduation, and that we have ways to address their needs moving forward. So, the first piece of it is to implement a ninth-grade tracking system. Now, we've had one of those. We continue to have it, so we're already in good shape with this policy area, but it really looks at every kid, when they're a ninth grader, we're watching to see, make sure they stay on track towards graduation, and we work with them and counsel them along the way. The next piece around that is...
What's an LEA?
LEA is a local education agency. Sorry about that. Yes.
Each county.
So, basically, every school system.
Okay.
In assessment, the college career readiness, so that's the CCR acronym there, this looks at our high school assessments that are in place right now. Right now, that college career readiness assessment happens by 11th grade. This pushes it to 10th grade and requires that if students are not, do not meet that college career readiness standard through that assessment, that there are remediation pieces put in place, that they're put on a pathway to meet that standard by the time they graduate, and those pathways are then built in. If we go to the next slide, you'll see here that if they're, if they don't meet that CCR standard, they have a specified program of study to meet that. If they have, then they can go into dual enrollment, AP classes, an IB program, which some school systems across the state use, or they go into a CTE pathway. And we have 23 different pathways, both at our Forest Center and our home high schools for those CTE programs. So, I think we're in good shape here with this as well, and we have well over 1,000 students who are in our dual enrollment program courses, either on our campus or directly at CSM. So, again, this is another place that we're, I think, we're in good shape. The piece that you see in the box on the right there looks at our career counseling program. So, we use Naviance as a program. Our counselors work with students directly to make sure that they have a plan moving forward towards graduation and after graduation. And then our CTE programs work with partner agencies for advisory councils as well, so that they have career connections immediately in the high school experience, too. And if we go on here, in the next piece of it, it ties to the resources, to the supports for our students. And so, as Dr. Smith said, we don't know exactly how these funding formulas are going to lay out yet, but there is a piece here that looks at how the state and local funding will expand, particularly, and this, this next section here was expanded upon in the Blueprint 2.0 legislation that looks specifically at our resources for addressing achievement gaps, again, those that were exacerbated as a result of the pandemic, but particularly focusing resources for students who are in concentrated areas of poverty, before and after-school programs, and you heard Dr. Smith mention earlier the programs that we have for those after-school programs, as well as connecting them with our health and human services in the community. And again, that's where the partnership with our Student Services Office and Social Services Departments here at county government are important, as well as increased support for our English-language learners. And then the final piece, community schools funding, there are grants that are associated with that. We do not have any schools in that particular grant program at this point, but our wraparound services and the expansion of supports with our Student Services programs is part of the program as well. If we go to the next slide, this is everything else that wasn't included in one of the policy areas that may have been added elsewhere in either the blueprint or the second layer of that legislation, which looks at leadership training, as well as the school-based health centers. And again, this is another area where I think we're really in good shape, because we have two community health centers, our school-based health centers, one at Spring Ridge, one at Margaret Brent. That is a wonderful partnership with the Health Department. Behavioral health services and the expanded need for that, for our students particularly, family support centers, data verification, and what this really did, it put some mechanisms in place to make sure that when we send data up to the state, it's verified, and when they have data, they send it back to us. And there's several other pieces here, too, but the last pieces that were added really were looking at the COVID supports and the funding that is tied to it. And if we go to the next slide, this just has the series of things that are coming up over this coming year. This year is a lot of planning and reporting of where we are, and then next year, you have a lot of these pieces of the blueprint that start to fall into place, like, for example, the full KRA assessment, increased pre-K slots, et cetera. So, this is, it's going to take about 10 years to fully implement all of the areas of the blueprint. We wanted to just provide you with a briefing on what the program will entail, what this implementation will entail, and we have ongoing meetings. We actually have one this evening with both our staff, our stakeholders, as well as community representatives, who are going to help us to develop our plan. So, with that, I know I went very fast to try to cover a lot of ground, but we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our closing remarks. Ms. Bailey?
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to meet. I think it's very beneficial to have these joint meetings, you know, the back and forth, and it's, I think, excellent for both boards to understand where we are both coming from. And I just wanted to thank the commissioners for the support over the past, what, 18 months?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
If not longer. You know, in dealing with all of the challenges for COVID, it's like every day, I know Dr. Smith and his staff would come in, and a different door would open, and there'd be a different something, demon, waiting for them to address. So, you know, we do appreciate the support, you know, that you've provided to us and our students and our faculty and staff over the past, you know, 18 months and longer. So, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, and I can agree, sometimes can be a roller coaster. Government can be that way, especially with dealing with a lot of people. So, there's sometimes there can be emotion involved, and then logic, and sometimes you got to balance the two, so it's been a great relationship. I want to actually point out, thank you and the Board of Education and all of your staff building this partnership with Parks and Recs and getting the field together. Now, it started with one phone call after a phone call from a citizen. And once it was in the hands of our department heads, here we sit with this amazing presentation that has expanded services. So, thank you to all of you for supporting that, because it's huge to the community.
I agree. I think there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that probably neither one of our boards do a great job of marketing, you know, what we're doing. And I think, you know, Mr. Watson and Mr. Shepherd's presentation just shows that, you know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes and a lot that's available to people we just don't necessarily, you know, banner it out there all the time, so.
Well, I want to thank you guys for coming over. Usually, you know, we are over at your place, it gets taped, it gets delayed, and people don't see it. Now, we may have had a couple burps this morning with the technology, but for the most part, the people are able to see it live and aren't waiting on, you know, Channel 95 at 5 o'clock next Sunday afternoon or something to watch the replay. So, if you have missed a little bit of the program, I'm sure it'll be replayed sometime, but the fact that we were able to be live and do this, I think, is good for everybody.
I agree.
Commissioners?
Thank you for all your work with the bus drivers. I'm glad that we were able to assist with that. It's good work. It's a good thing, and they work really hard, so thank you.
I'll get back to the pillars, take care of people. All right, Dr. Smith, anyone?
All right. Well, thank you very much. We will adjourn, and we'll order reconvene at 10:45.